Good morning, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for September 19th, I'm sorry, September 14th, 2017, to order. Again, this is the Planning Commission, there was a Board of County Commissioners meeting scheduled, but that's been moved to Monday at nine o'clock. So, again, this is Planning Commission, not the Board of County Commissioners. With that being said, if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Knapp, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning Commissioners, we do, we have three changes to the agenda. Item number four, PDR 1621-ZP, which is Armstrong, LenTran Inc., Turner Cone, Graham Inc., Silverstone. There's an addition of a special approval analysis to the staff report for a project partially in a 25-year floodplain. Applicants revised special approval request letter and revised recommended motion. Item number five, PDR 1702-ZP, Morgan Riverside Preserve. There's an addition of a special approval analysis to the staff report for a project partially in a 25-year floodplain. Applicants revised special approval request letter and a revised recommended motion. And item number seven, Plan Amendment 1706, Ordinance 1733, City of Bradenton, Evers Reservoir. There's an attachment to the staff report indicating changes to the comprehensive plan and a public comment letter. This concludes the changes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shank, any changes?
No changes.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number one, which is citizens' comments. These are, this is your opportunity to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to something that's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity later in the meeting when that item is heard. So is there anybody who wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and move on to the next item. So, these are presentation upon request items. So, Ms. Knapp, if you could, please read item number two into the, into the record.
Item number two is Land Development Code Text Amendment 1703, Ordinance 1738. It's a county-initiated land development code text amendment regarding clinics. This is to be continued to no date set and to be re-advertized.
Thank you, thank you. Do we need a motion, Ms. Shank, on this, if it's being continued without advertisement?
Yes, it's the motion in your package.
Okay. So the Chair will consider a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ron.
I move to continue the public hearing for LDCT 1703, Ordinance 1738, to no date set and to be re-advertized.
Thank you very much, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delisle is line second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the Chair will call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero, thank you. The next item is quasi-judicial, so if you would, if you intend to speak on any item today, if you would, please rise and the clerk will swear you in.
You swear or firm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also on this item, I have to recuse myself, one of, one of my associates prepared the traffic impact statement, so I'm gonna turn over the gavel to Mr. Rhodes and I'm gonna step down from the dice.
Good morning, Ms. Knapp, would you please read item number three into the record?
Item number three is PDMU 1704-ZG, Ellington Commerce Park. This is a rezon of approximately 116 acres of a total of 187 acres. Almost 71 acres which are already zoned, PDMU, planned development mixed use, located in the northwest corner of US 301 and I-75, just north of 17th Street East, also known as Memphis Road, from planned development residential, planned development commercial, and agricultural suburban to planned development mixed use zoning district, and approval of a general development plan for a mixed-use project consisting of 500,000 square feet of office warehouse and 20,500 square feet of office.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any ex parte communications that need to be stated?
Yes, sir.
Now, this item number three is a presentation upon request. Commissioners, do we have any desire for a presentation? We're good as we are, right? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number three? No one coming forward, all right. Then do we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lesline.
Based upon staff report evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein, I move to recommend approval of the Manatee County zoning ordinance number PDMU-17-04ZG, approval of general development plan with stipulations A.1, B.1, C.1 through C.6, D.1 through D.3, and E.1 through E.11. Granted special approvals for, one, a project in the MUFLUC, policy 2.2.1.21.4; and, two, a project adjacent to a perennial stream, policy 3.2.2.1; and, three, for a project in an entrance way as recommended by staff.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five. Thank you.
I'll reassume the Chair position. All right, the next item we have is item number four. Ms. Knapp, can you please read item four into the record?
Item number four is PDR 1621-ZP, Armstrong, LenTran Inc., Turner Cone and Graham Inc., Silverstone. This is a rezon of approximately 289 acres, from suburban agriculture to residential single-family to the planned development residential zoning district, and approving a preliminary site plan for 799 lots for single-family detached residents on the west side of I-75 and Simbarco Road, south side of 69th Street East, east side of Ellington Galette Road, and north side of future segment of Experimental Farm Road, Ellington.
Miss Knapp, all right, again, this is a presentation upon request. First of all, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this item?
No.
I need to disclose that I did do an analysis on this property, but it wasn't for the applicant, it was for a third party, so I have, I have reviewed information related to this property, so, but not to this application. So is, what's the, the pleasure of the board? Do we need a presentation on this item? Anyone? Okay. We have no speaker cards for this, so we're gonna go to public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak on item number four? Anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing no one come forward, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rhodes.
I make a motion to approve, based on the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein. I move to recommend adoption of the Manatee County zoning ordinance, PDR 16-21-ZP, and approval of the preliminary plan with stipulations A.1 through A.5, B.1 through B.5, C.1 through C.5, and D.1. Granting special approval for a project, number one, exceeding a gross density of two dwelling units per acre in a RES III future land use category. Number two, adjacent to a perennial stream. And number three, a project partially in the 25-year floodplain as recommended by staff.
We have a motion. Mr. Horgan, second, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the Chair will call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero, thank you. All right, the next item is item number five. Ms. Knapp, can you please read item number five into the record?
Item number five is PDR 1702-ZP, Morgan Riverside Preserve. This is a rezon of approximately 44 and a half acres on the north side of Upper Manatee River Road, commonly at 15051 Upper Manatee River Road, Bradenton, from general agriculture to the planned development residential zoning district, and approving a preliminary site plan for 126 lots for single-family detached residents.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. Again, item number five is a presentation upon request, but I have speaker cards for that, that particular item, so we're gonna, if you would, first, are there any ex parte communications regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. I would like to ask that staff just make an introduction, then we'll go to public comments to see what, what the comments might be, the concerns might be on this, and then we'll, we'll see how the discussion goes from there. So, staff, if you could, please make the, introduce the project, or the, I'm sorry, the application.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and other members of the Planning Commission. I am Stephanie Moreland, and I have been sworn. The project before you is for a rezon to planned development residential from the general agricultural district, one dwelling unit per five acres, that is the A zoning district. The preliminary site plan is for 126 lots for single-family detached residences. As the supervisor pointed out, the, the site is on the north side of Upper Manatee River Road. It is 44.5 acres, and it has 827 feet of frontage along the north side of the Upper Manatee River Road. The site is in the UF III future land use category. The, the density proposed is below the maximum three dwelling units per acre. Let's see, what else? This site abuts the, the Manatee River to the north, and it's partially in the CHHA overlay district. And staff is recommending approval today.
Thank you. Who is present for the applicant? Do you wish to make a presentation now, or would you prefer to wait to hear public comments so we can focus on the specific concerns? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Layton, I'm with CNS Engineering, and I have been sworn. We'd like to wait and hear what the comments are to be able to address those specifically, to move the hearing along.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to the public comment portion of the hearing, and again, this is quasi-judicial, so you must be sworn to provide testimony. The first speaker card I have is Mr. Art Ball. If you could, please come forward and state your name and that you have been sworn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Art Ball, I have been sworn a few minutes ago, I believe. I'm just here to describe some of the facts relating to this development proposal. Of the 45, and I can only speak in round numbers because my memory isn't that great. Of the 45 acres that has been stated, one-third of that acreage is in the floodway. That is, that takes the 45 acres down to 30 acres remaining that can really be built on or developed, okay? Of the 30 acres remaining, it will take about 20% of that acreage for improvements, site improvements, roads, drainage ponds, whatever. So if you take 20% away from the remaining 30 acres, there are only 25 acres left that can really support having houses built on it. If we're talking 125 houses on 25 acres, you are talking five houses per acre, not under the three houses per acre that was originally just stated. Our concern is that we are, I represent Rancho Real Fuego, which is right next door to this property. I'm co-owner of that ranch. On the other side, on the west side of this property, is the Enclave Development. We are talking $500,000 homes. Across the road is Country Meadows, we are talking $300,000 to $400,000 homes. Just down the road is Greyhawk, we're talking $400,000 homes, plus or minus, in round numbers. At a density of five homes per acre, the value of those homes in that neighborhood would be far less than the surrounding area, and it would tend to devalue those adjacent property owners' concerns. So that is, I, I, I know I can't stop progress, I know I can't stop development. Even though I'm a rancher, I don't like it, being honest with you, I'd like to see it state country. Nothing I can do about that, but I do dispute the high density, the small homes, and the lower values in that area. Let me speak for just a second on the flood. As you all know, we just had a hurricane come through. We did not really have a flood this time because the dam is being managed very well now. They let water out well ahead of time, and they don't have to let the river go up so high, but...
Continue, continue your thought.
Continue. Katie, the girl that, the lady that manages the dam, she called us and said that when the storm was coming our way, that she could have to open the gates possibly as high as allowing 12,500 cubic feet per second, minute, whatever it is, come out of that dam. We did not experience that kind of rainfall that could have been possible with that storm, and Katie only had to let 7,500 per minute come out of the dam. That caused the river to flow through our pasture, which it does in those instances, and then our pasture land naturally drains to the west through this said development, and it flows out that direction and back into the river. One thing to keep in mind is however this property is developed, if it's developed, it cannot impede our natural flow of water to drain our pasture land. Also, the river came up to the top of our fence posts in our lower pasture at that 7,500 gallon, or cubic feet per however rate. If it had been 12,5, we would have had about three to four more feet of water higher on the land side than we experienced this past weekend. Now, three to four feet higher puts water over the entire county designated floodway of this, this proposed development property. Also, the plan that was showed to us...
Yeah, we're not trying to filibuster, we're trying to get everybody out.
The plan that was showed to us months ago, months ago, showed the floodway, the arbitrary line the county draws so many feet from the river.
Right.
We have experienced floods, and I have data to support that, that the actual floodway is even further away from the river in spots, so...
Right.
There's even less acreage involved.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay?
Yes, sir, thank you. And, again, I think many of you will have the same concerns, you don't have to go in a lot of detail. It's, it's, if you want to just say what Mr. Ball said, that's, that's fine, but we don't need to filibuster, just, if it's new testimony, just feel free to provide it. And I don't want to cut anybody's off, cut anybody off, I want to get your complete thought on, on these subjects, so. Okay, the next speaker card I have is Mr. Ken Miller. If you would, please come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn. Mr. Miller. Please, please, you can come up here and just state your name, that you've been sworn, and if you wish to add anything, please do, and if not, just say no.
Yes, my name is Ken Muller, and I've done all those things. However, my question that I have is not on this project, it's on the last one, for the project, last on the list. So I'd like to retain my question until that point.
That would be number seven then, right?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, we got a mis-ID of one. So, you're good on this one?
Yes, I have no questions on this one.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have for this particular application is Steve Carton. Mr. Carton? All right, I don't think we got that on record, but we'll hold that card for a moment. Mr. Larry Howe is the next speaker card I have. Just in general, any comments that are made need to be made on the record at the, at the microphone. Good morning, Mr. Howe, if you could, please state your name and that you have been sworn.
Good morning, my name is Larry M. Howe, H-O-W-E, I have been previously sworn.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of, of the Enclave at Country Meadows, and I don't need to repeat, you know, what testimony has gone on before, but all of us in the Enclave at Country Meadows are very concerned about the extreme density of this development. Definitely does not fit in to the existing neighborhood with the Enclave at Country Meadows, Country Meadows themselves, Winding River, Greyhawk Landing, what have you. These developments are all considerably less dense than this proposed development. As such, we're very concerned about the impact that this development is going to have on our property values. As previously stated, most of these developments have housing in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. I presume that this density development, we're talking about houses perhaps in the $200,000 range, I think it doesn't fit in the neighborhood and is going to impact our development. The additional point I wish to raise is the possible use of the county road for construction, that county access road that runs between the, the proposed development and the Enclave at Country Meadows. It's immediately to the east of, of the Enclave, immediately to the west of the proposed development. We in the Enclave are extremely concerned about the use of that county road as a development, access for the proposed development, raising considerable amounts of dust and noise for people on the east side of the development in the Enclave. One additional concern, looking at the development, it appears with the zero clearance for some of these lots abutting Upper Manatee River Road, I presume these are going to be townhouses or condo villas, what have you. Again, this type of development is totally inconsistent with the, with the present development that's going on in Upper Manatee River Road and any of the other subdivisions. So, that's the extent of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. Again, the next speaker card I have is Steve Carton. If you could, please come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn. Good morning.
My name is Steve Carton, I live in the Enclave at Country Meadows, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I guess in the kindest of words, a development, a development of this nature is going to wreck financial havoc in the neighborhood, all along Upper Manatee River Road. There's a place for this type of development, and it has a very special purpose, and that is to produce as many homes as you can for those who need a home and who can afford to live in the neighborhood. And it seems a little exclusionary in that we're not being fair, to be blunt. I put a lot of my money into my house and carry a mortgage, and all of a sudden, the value is going to come crashing down, there's no doubt about it. You put too many homes on a small piece of property, like they do up in New Jersey, and it comes around before long to destroy not only the property, but the neighborhood itself. It's not progress, as one person spoke here today, it is the reverse of progress. Progress has this proper place, an appropriate place, and I don't want to discriminate in any one way, shape, form, or another, but it doesn't have its place in this whole area that is not designed to work as this small piece of property is designed to work, to squeeze every last ounce of, of property into a home. I adopt everything everyone else has said, except the use of the word progress, which I think this is not progress, this is a step backward. And I lived in New Jersey for 77 years before coming down here, and if you want to see where progress doesn't work in, in the element of land in many areas, it just goes in reverse. And all we have to do is wait five or 10 years, and you'll reap the rewards of any decision to allow such density on this property. I would respectfully ask that you reconsider the density issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Those were all the speaker cards I had for this particular application, but is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward and make a statement on this application? Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we're going to go to the applicant. And as discussed previously, this is a presentation upon consent, I'm sorry, a presentation upon request. So we're trying to focus in on the concerns and address those specifically, the ones that have been brought up, so.
Thank you again. Rachel Layton with CNS Engineering, and I have been sworn. I have with me this morning Caleb Grimes with Grimes-Goble-Gladfelter. Forget it all. Okay, so to try and answer some of the questions that came up, yes, we are aware that the project does lie in the floodway, there's no development proposed. There are, there is an existing home in that floodway, and that will be, that footprint will be reused for the amenity center, but the development of the homes will not be within the floodway. I want to make that very clear. The Comprehensive Plan does not ask us to take out the area of floodway when we do the gross density calculations. The gross density calculations for the project are three dwelling units per acre, according to the Comprehensive Plan, and that is the gross acreage versus the number of homes. So, while we find a lot of our citizens struggle with that, that's how the Comprehensive Plan tells us to do those calculations. With the 126 homes on the 44 and a half acres, what we're providing is a variety of housing stock, which is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, section 2.9.1. And what, what that really drives home is that we need more than just the half-acre lots throughout the county. Our infrastructure just isn't built to support that. What we need in our county is a variety of housing stocks, between the 4,500 square foot lots and the 21,000 square foot lots. What we see in this area is really a varying trend. There is one subdivision there called Hegel Point, which is actually residential duplex three that has 50 platted lots on about 17 acres. So there, there is a other product type in this area besides the 14,000 square foot lots that are in Enclave. And again, that is, what we're seeing in the county is a trend for smaller lots in planned communities. To address Mr. Ball's specific concern for the drainage through our site, we've been working on making sure that that is accommodated. There are existing ditches from his property traversing ours, and we will make sure that that drainage continues to the river as we design the engineering of the project. Talking about the density, Hagel... Talking about the density, Hegel Point is RDD3, so that's already set. That was actually a 1958 project, that duplex development. For the use of Williams Road, we're proposing to improve it 150 feet to the connection point, and then the rest of the road will be maintained as it is. We don't want to affect the backyards of those neighbors in the enclave. And I want to clarify, the product type is single-family detached. These are not multifamily, these are not townhomes. They'll be limited to the 35 feet in height per the comprehensive plan, which would allow a two-story building, but the buildings have not been designed yet, nor have they been priced yet. And then I also want to mention that along Upper Manatee River Road and Williams Road, we will have 20-foot buffers along those roadways. I believe that addresses all the comments that were raised by the speakers. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, or have Caleb to help answer them as well.
Are there any questions for the applicant, Mr. Rutledge?
Yeah, um, thank you for clarifying this. So I had a couple of questions. Forgive me. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
We had you anyway.
Yeah, I know. So, because I'm not an engineer, can you explain to me on the drawing here? I see a group of double hash lines, one's bold hash lines and one's small hash line, but I can't tell what that description is because the, the identity box is not clear on my.
Which drawing are you looking at, Mr. Rutledge?
I'm sorry, this is in the ZNS drawings of the site plan, and it's got the recognition of the flood plains and all that in the housing stock. It's in your presentation package. Let's see if I can see a drawing number. Sheet six. Sheet four, I'm sorry.
Page, page four of the PDF?
Page five of your drawings.
Is this the one you're talking about?
No.
Sheet four?
This is, this is, uh.
The.
ZNS's drawings, your engineering drawings are part of the package submitted? And so you've got a match line on top that says, see, see site sheet four, matching sheet four on the top, so I, I'm assuming this is five.
Can we have the overhead camera? I also have with me Jeb Mulock with ZNS Engineering.
Sorry?
I have with us Jeb Mulock with ZNS Engineering. He's been sworn. I'm gonna have him as engineer of record answer that question.
Okay.
Commissioner Caleb Grimes and I have been sworn. If I, if I can briefly, and then I'm gonna have Jeb Mulock, engineer with ZNS, explain it more fully. But, but what we do when we're doing these developments is we identify the various flood-related lines on our maps. And basically, you will see three whenever we do one. If you're on a river, you do the floodway. The floodway is the area that was described earlier, that if you end up with a situation with a flood, that you, you, where the waters could come up to. And what we do is we make sure we design our projects that we are outside of that floodway. And that's why you'll see that one heavier line with all of the home sites outside of that floodway. You will also see, and I know you've seen it many, many times, your 100-year floodplain line, and you see your 25-year floodplain line. And what we do is we design our projects so in the post-development period, our homes are, end up being above and outside the 100-year floodplain, so that your lowest floor member and everything is above that, which, of course, the 100-year floodplain is larger than the 25, so you end up being outside of the 25. And so that's what the various lines are that you'll see on these drawings, and their, their pre-development lines. Jeb, do you want to add to that or explain where they are?
Yeah. Again, this is, I'm Jeb from ZNS Engineering. I'm the engineer of record. Mr. Rutledge, just to answer your question directly, if.
And you have been sworn?
Yes, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to point it out here. So this, this heavier line here.
Yes, sir.
Is the floodway line. So, as you can see, this is the back of the lots here, which pretty much follows the line of the floodway, which obviously the intent is to keep the lots outside of the floodway. The floodway being.
Are they at an elevated level?
They're at an elevated level, correct.
About how much, would you guess?
Um, on average, maybe a couple of feet, two or three feet above existing ground as it sits today. And then the next line that you see, which is also a bold line, this one here, that's your 25-year, which is a, the current 25-year. The post obviously will be a little bit different. It will be, the lots will be outside of the 25-year. And then the next line that you see, which is kind of thin, it's a little harder to see, that is the floodplain line. So the floodway obviously is the area where you have flow, velocity. The floodplain is more of a stagnant type of floodplain. So that, that, I think that explains.
It does. That's exactly what I was hoping for, thanks. So, you're building homes in two of these specific areas?
We will be building homes, which is pretty typical, in the floodplain.
Right.
And we will compensate for that.
25, not the 100-year.
Yeah, the 25 and the 100-year, both. I mean, the 100 encompasses the 25, so.
Right.
It'll, it'll be in both, yeah. So, but as you see in the north of those lines, those are your lakes, your compensation areas that will be designed for those impacts, but not the floodway. Let me be clear.
For clarity, Mr. Mulock, you, you said you're gonna be building homes within the 25 and 100-year floodplain. That's the current floodplain. Those lines actually move, do they not?
Yes, thank you. That, that's correct. Those, those lines, once the development is done, we will do what's called a LOMAR forum, which will remove those lots out of the floodplain. So technically, post-construction, there will be no homes in the flood, in the floodplain. Can y'all still hear me okay?
Yeah, there you go.
The compensation is, is, is basically a one-for-one impact mitigation facility that, for every cubic feet of, of impact that we have, we will have mitigation for that is within the floodplain, so that it's a one-for-one mitigation. Does that make sense?
Again, Caleb Grimes, if I can, from a little bit of a layman's term, having done this for many, many years, what you want to make sure of is that your floodplain area and quantity of water the floodplain can contain today is the same as post-development. So when he says compensation, if you put, and you obviously put some fill in what is today's floodplain, so that you, as he said, you take all of the homes out of the floodplain. When you do that, you take some land and create more floodplain of an equal amount, so that in the post-development situation, the amount of water that would, would go on this tract, the same amount goes there before and after, so that you have no effect on any of your neighbors. And that is required by our county, it is required by SWIFTMUD, and it is done throughout the county all the time. Probably you don't get to hear about it as much here, but that's exactly how it works. And it is, it is very well-regulated, it's very well-followed, and in the end, you, so that you do what he, Jeb described as a LOMAR, you go with FEMA and you go through and you show that the homes now are no longer in the floodplain, in the 100-year, in the 25-year, and we're not even touching the floodway. So that's how that works.
Thank you. Sorry, who was that? Mr. Ron.
Is it not true that you're, when you follow LOMAR, does it not move the people on any affected floodplain from a FEMA, FEMA designated flood hazard area into an X-zone, so they will no longer be in the FEMA-designated flood hazard area?
That's correct, yes. Essentially, you're moving that floodplain line, correct?
Thank you.
And so my simple question, because Caleb, you communicate in a simple fashion, right? So.
I'm not sure.
It's kind of a setup, you know?
Yeah, I, I get it.
So, so my question is, this is kind of a simple analysis. When you all finish doing what you're gonna do, I forget about the size, but when you recontour this land and you have all these neighbors that have this experience, you're gonna make it better for them because you're not only gonna compensate, you're going to the new compensation lines or the new floodplain lines and compensating for that, right? Because they've been adjusted to a higher level recently, correct?
I, I'm not sure I'm following what you're saying.
That my neighbors are gonna be better off, not worse off, because of the way.
Oh, no, they will not be worse off.
That is correct. I mean, there was a recent, I say recent, it was probably in the last four years or so, there were new FEMA maps drawn, and, and so the lines did move, and it is this development, as it's engineered, will be engineered per those new lines and that new elevations, et cetera, not the old lines.
Right. So as a professional, if you were living next door to this, you'd be in favor of this because it's gonna make your lot safer from floods that, that were designed kind of before that estimate?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, you know, I always say this, my, my professional license is not worth one subdivision, so we want to get this right, and we will, for sure.
Any, Mr.?
Future land use is UF3. That allows you three houses per acre.
That's correct.
When was that determined?
With the comprehensive plan in 1989. So it's been well-established. Thank you.
Just a couple of additional questions. I believe the road to the west is Wilson, is that?
It's Williams Road, yes.
Is, that roadway is being proposed to be improved?
Only to the entrance that we're using on the southern side. So it's gonna be improved about 150 feet.
If you can look at the overhead, this is Upper Manatee River Road. This is our main entrance, and this is a secondary entrance, so it is only that part, so that the rest of Williams Road next to the enclave is not being touched.
Right. The, uh, Williams.
A buffer will be put in here.
Right. Williams and Upper Manatee River Road are both public rights of ways, is that correct?
Correct.
And access cannot be restricted to those roads, is my understanding. We'll get the clarification from staff, that a little bit later, but my, my question is, is, is it the applicant's intent to utilize Williams Road as a construction access, or is that simply to be?
Yeah, I think, I think what I want to address is, I think it was Mr. Howe who brought it up about construction and, and dust on Williams Road. The, the main thing, one of the things that's changed about this plan is that we used to have a second access to our subdivision north of, of where this current one is. And I think that's what the residents adjacent in the enclave may have been referring to, if there was, if that was maintained a dirt road and it was one of the accesses for the subdivision, that there would be traffic going up and down quite a bit, accessing our proposed subdivision. Well, that's not the case anymore. We've got a second access, but it's on the southern portion of the property, therefore cars coming in and out of the new subdivision will not be accessing, you know, to the north and creating dust up and down. They won't be driving on the dirt road. Primarily, it's gonna be the people that live to the north back there that still use that dirt road only.
Right. My, my question is, to give the applicant the opportunity to, to indicate if that's gonna be utilized for construction. I, I think that's gonna be what.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. That, it'll, it'll be more than likely out of the main entrance to the front, but we'll, we would not have construction go through the side.
Right, okay. That's, that's what I was looking for. And in addition, I believe there was a discussion regarding buffers. I think somebody said houses being abutted, or abutted right up to Upper Manatee River Road. We, in the, the application pack, or the, the package we have, we see a buffer.
That's correct. There's 20-foot roadway buffers along Williams Road and along Upper Manatee River Road.
And that, it, that's a planted buffer. It'll have landscaping in it.
Correct. Yes, it'll be planted by code.
Okay, all right. Are there any additional questions for the applicant?
One more. You said they're not gonna use the access to the north, but on the drawings you just showed us, there's a, four lanes of road that seem to dead-end into a line. Is that not accessing that road?
It does not access that road. It dead-ends into the buffer. It's so that those lots have access to the road. So those driveways will connect to that road, but that road does not connect all the way back to Williams Road.
Doesn't go back into Williams. So you have one access point, and it's to the front, and that's where you're redesigning. You're not resigning all the way to the back.
To the north, we only have one access point along Williams Road to the south, here.
That's it.
And then if you go to.
All of the rest.
Like that.
On this sheet, this actually dead-ends into the buffer, so it does not connect back to Williams Road.
Not intended to do that.
No, there's no intention to connect there.
Mr. Horgan?
As a part of the landscape buffer next to the enclave, has there been any consideration to doing something with trees, things like that, that would mitigate the impact on those larger lots?
There are a number of existing trees that we're gonna work to preserve, and really being able to preserve those existing larger, older oak trees is, is gonna be much better than having to put in any type of new buffer. But we'll be planting it to the, the county standards with the, the additional trees and shrubs that are required. I have 33 shrubs per 100 linear feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have, I had one question.
Mr. Rutledge?
Good to see you. So the statement was made that this is good county housing stock, you know, this, this modified size and pricing. I heard somebody say that, anyway. And my question is, and I struggle with this a little intellectually, so maybe it'll help me, but, you know, it's great to say that and say, oh, we want this integrated housing stock, and we want to put all these things and everybody's together and all that, but, but I'm very sensitive to the concept that I think most people's biggest investments are home, and putting lower pricing homes, you know, changing housing stock, which is a code word for bringing in less expensive housing, is a little bit of a buzzword, and not necessarily, why not make housing stock go higher and take values up? So conceptually, I'm just curious about your thoughts as a professional planner.
Stephanie Moreland and I have been sworn. Mr. Chairman to Mr. Rutledge. In answer to your question, I think a mix of variety homes, variety of, of different-sized homes is good for an area. However, when we looked at the, the code, market values is not something, the economic market values is not something that we consider when we are reviewing the, the project.
Uh, Mr. Horgan?
I guess my question would be for the county attorney. I don't know if these things are on or not. Pardon? Are we allowed to consider economic value when making land use decisions?
No, not in rezoning applications. You don't consider the hardship financially to the applicant or the increase in value. You only consider the comps of plan, LDC, compatibility and like. And you also need to consider whether you need a stipulation, that construction traffic access.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Ms. Moreland, I'm a little familiar with the Upper Manatee area. So, and I understand the lot size and the homes on that, but if you move, I don't know the names of the communities, but if you're coming up from 64 and you're headed towards the Water Leaf area, on the sides opposite Water Leaf, there are a lot of relatively new developments that are taking place. And I know how the acreage is calculated, but those homes, when you drive into them, they're a lot less than one or two houses per acre. But when you're driving down Upper Manatee Road, they have the buffer and they look relatively nice communities there, and you really don't know until you're in it what is the actual density. You happen, I know how the formula is calculated, but you happen to know, I think that those footages are like 12, 15 feet between houses in that area. So that's a far cry from the half acre or the, the acre that you see at Country Meadows, and then you see at the enclave. And the other question that I have is, and I guess this would be more for the, the applicant, is a small, a smaller lot does not equal a cheaper home necessarily. I know smaller lots are more the trend, but just because I've got a smaller lot doesn't mean my house value is gonna be less than one on, on a larger lot. And I think that's sort of a misconception.
Did you get the question?
Do you, do you know on some of those newer complexes? Do you know on some of those newer complexes on Upper Manatee Road around the Water Leaf area, not beyond Country Meadows, et cetera, what those spaces are between the homes? Because I know that, in actuality, they're not on a half acre and acre lot.
I don't have those figures with me at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? I have just a few questions. Mr. Davis, again, to the right-of-way question, these are public rights of way, Williams and Upper Manatee River Road. And generally speaking, you can't restrict access unless, maybe like, as we mentioned earlier, construction, if that's done with a condition or stipulation. Is that the county's position?
For the record, Clark Davis, Transportation Planning Division Manager, and I have been sworn. To my knowledge, Williams Road is a public road. Upper Manatee River Road is not just a public road, it's a thoroughfare, the one where we keep traffic counts and try and maintain, achieve and maintain adopted levels of service. We control access to those facilities, so we don't allow them to get spaced too close together. And we look at the kinds of turn lanes that might be required at them, but we don't restrict it entirely. So those roads can be used for access if they meet spacing criteria and are properly designed. The Williams Road as a public road to be used for construction traffic, they'd work with our engineering staff, and they would look at the condition of the roadway, and they would, we could either restrict it altogether because of its current condition, or we could impose conditions that require them to correct any damage that occurs to it during the course of construction if it is used for construction traffic.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Mr. Rutledge?
So, and just looking at the nearby approved developments that the staff report put together, I was looking through Brookside Estates, the 7,800 square foot lots, Country Size 18,000, 15,000 at Country Meadows, 7,200 at Stewart Grove. And we're proposing these average lot sizes at 4,000. And I guess that's a question of not economics, that's really compatibility, right? Would be the argument. Might be an argument.
Is that a question for me?
Yeah. I mean, do you find it compatible that everything else is at least 7,000, these are 4,000, is that?
Well, these are not all the subdivisions on Upper Manatee River Road. These are some of them in the area of this site. But if you do an overview of that whole area, we have Del Tierra that has also smaller lot sizes as well. I'd like to read, though, the definition from the Land Development Code of compatibility. Compatibility shall mean a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time, such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. The comprehensive plan also gives us a method of mitigation for these small lots through screening, buffer sizes, opacity of fences, and things like that in the buffers.
Mr. Rutledge, does that answer your question?
It certainly is an answer to the question.
It didn't?
It is.
It did.
Mr. Rutledge asked you about consist, or-
Compatibility.
Compatibility. My question is related to consistency. In the staff report, you indicated that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code with regard to the, what would be allowed in this area. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe that it is consistent. Comprehensive Plan Policy 2.6.1.1 requires that all adjacent development differs in use, intensity, height, and/or density to utilize land use techniques to mitigate potential incompatibilities. Such techniques shall include but not be limited to use of undisturbed or undeveloped and landscape buffers, use of increased size and opacity of screening, increased setbacks, innovative site design, appropriate building design, limits on duration of uses, noise attenuation techniques. And I think we have addressed the mitigation for this site for single-family detached homes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Horgan.
Stephanie, if you could go back and read that bit about increased, I heard landscaping or buffering.
Use of increased size and opacity of screening.
Right. Okay, that answers my question. So that means that, in theory, compatibility could include larger than normal or minimal county standards for the buffering between neighborhoods. Correct?
I think so, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we go to closing comments of the applicant? Okay. Unless, does the staff have any closing comments before we go to the rebuttal?
Let me just quote one more policy from the comprehensive plan.
Yes, ma'am.
It says, "require the use of planned unit development in conjunction with the mitigation techniques described in the policies I just read." So the applicant, that is what they are requesting, they're requesting a rezone to planned development residential.
So to interpret, instead of going through a straight zoning, that would be, that's not allowed, we have to review and approve a specific, a site-specific plan that-
Exactly, yes.
-that has the elements of the development outlined. Okay, thank you. Mr. Rutledge.
And Ms. Moreland, is your opinion, after working with this and designing the PUD, that you've used all those tools that we have at our discretion, advise them of that, they've come back with something you think's acceptable, and you are recommending?
Yes. I think, I think it is acceptable, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go to the applicant for rebuttal. Mr. Grimes, you're on the clock.
Thank you, Caleb Grimes. I will try to stay within the clock. Just a few things that I want to address. One of the provisions in our comprehensive plan has said, and I don't have it in front of me and can't exactly quote it, but strong communities are exemplified by having a variety of housing opportunities. If we go out and look at the most successful developments out there, you don't see a uniform of one kind of development, one kind of housing size, one kind of way to live. Different people like to live in different ways. I mean, go out to Lakewood Ranch, look at the variety of home sizes and lot sizes and things you have in different communities. And that's what makes things successful. We have people who want to live on smaller lots. They don't want to have to care for a yard. They don't want to have to do all of that. And then they have a nice amenity section that they're able to use in place of that. And someone said that size of lot doesn't necessarily mean value of homes. And that is true. These are going to be, you know, they're going to be the homes that we see built today. They're very nice, and their values are good. If you really want to destroy the value of homes, you build something exactly the same so that the competition is there to drive down. You know, more competition, the more it goes down. And then as far as the compatibility goes, please don't lose track of the fact that these are single-family homes, not next to, but across the road from single-family homes. They're the same type of living, people living in single-family detached homes in a subdivision with an amenity center. It's the same type, they just have a little bit different sized lot. As far as the buffer, if these were not separated by a road, the buffer would be 15 feet by code. Be 15 feet on this side, 15 feet on their side, you end up with 30 feet. In this instance, we have Williams Road, which I don't recall its width, but I'm sure it's over 50 feet. And then you have, we have a 20-foot buffer, not the 15 that would be required if they were adjacent to each other, where we are saving trees, where we are planting additional things. So you have not only the two buffers that you would normally have between developments, you have a road. And so the compatibility is there. We see it everywhere, where we have residential next to residential. Where our code puts in really strong buffers is when you have something like commercial next to residential. And we have a lot of provisions on light industrial next to residential. And so we are following the code. We're putting in the things that are required. We're consistent with our comprehensive plan. We've worked hard with staff to come up with a project that is appropriate for the area, that is consistent with what our public is demanding and our market today, that is a slightly different product, so it's not competing with other products. And we ask that you approve. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move to deliberations. Is there any discussion amongst the commission regarding this application?
You know, this is the thing that I struggle with the most, is I do think economics is part of what should be analyzed, but we're not entitled to that. And so I always have chafed a little bit because I'm a business guy, and economics seems to matter a lot. I'll tell you this, too. I do believe when we develop within the code that we have today, and with the new information that we have today, that these projects are much different than the old days when people just threw stuff up. And I think I always got to kind of be reminded of that, that we've got a new floodplain, we've got new standards, we've got new elevations. I mean, there's things that are better today than they were just five or 10 years ago. So I like that. The other thing I was just thinking about, because I kind of struggle with this myself, because I'm out in that east side, you know, we drive by some, what I'll call townhomes, they're detached, zero-lot line, and we drive by, and my wife says, you know, when we get too old to take care of our lot, we don't want to move out of the area. We'd like to move into that. That's, she tells me all the time, like implying I'm getting old. But, you know, there is something about communities where you don't want to leave, that you like the area, you like the people, I go to a certain church, and maybe I don't want to leave. And I get that. And I do think there's some community where I like to have kids running around. Not everybody does, but I do. I like to see them, reminds me that I used to have kids. So I struggle with this a little bit, and all you people that have your homes out there and your investment, because I have that as well. But I do think we've got top-quality people trying to develop this. When I see the design and thinking, I'm impressed. I do struggle a bit, because I've got kind of the same anxiety all over Florida. I mean, it's just every time you look around, that's the question. But I appreciate your information. I'm very respectful of the staff. I always have a difficult time not agreeing with them. But I appreciate all this information, and I'm going to vote in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Horgan.
I share the same concerns or comments Mr. Rutledge had. I believe that he's absolutely right, that there are, that there needs to be a diversity of housing, that something that is just homogenous doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be worth more. I do, however, hope that before this project is built, that some consideration is given to increasing the size of the landscaping and the buffer between the property and the next-door neighbor. It's always the case where, if you've been used to looking out your backyard and seeing nothing but beautiful open space, that it helps. If somebody does go a little bit extra, maybe it costs $20 a home to do it, but that you do something that's a little bit over and above what we require as a minimum, but I will be voting for the project.
Thank you. Any additional deliberation? I would like to say that one of the things that we see quite often is, whenever there's some uncertainty, a lot of people who are possibly neighbors create a scenario that is like a doomsday scenario. I see just down the road a, mobile homes or trailers, I'm not sure what they call the politically correct term for that, but in that area, and Greyhawk I know has nice homes, that's the one, the community I'm the most familiar with. But there's a variety. So I don't know how putting a gated community, it was indicated on the plans to be a gated community, I don't know if that's the intent, but I don't see that being something that would be a detractor in this area. And again, as some of the other commissioners mentioned, that there's a need for a variety of housing types. I know, I think Mr. Grimes referenced Lakewood Ranch, which is a planned community that has anything from apartments to the Lake Club, which is a very high-end community. And it's still a very desirable location to live. So hopefully, the concerns of the neighbors won't come to fruition. But I've seen a lot of communities in my position as the, being on the planning commission, where it's, I think the concerns are not realized in many cases. It's, I'm sure nobody's going to indicate that there's not going to be an impact on the roads and stuff, but it's going to be typical for a community such as us. Any other questions? All right. If there's no other deliberation, the chair will entertain a motion. We had discussed, I think Ms. Schenk mentioned, if there was a consideration, a desire to restrict Williams Road to construction traffic, that that would need to be in a motion. So if the person making the motion is compelled to do such, just include that. Anybody? Motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair. With the stipulation on Williams Road, the construction. Based upon staff report, evidence presented, comments made at public hearing, and finding their request to be consistent with the Manti County Comprehensive Plan, the Manti County Land Development Code contained herein, I move to recommend adoption of Manti County Zoning Ordinance Number PDR 1702-ZP, and the approval of the preliminary site plan with stipulations A1 through A4, B1 through B10, C1 through C3, and D1, granting special authority, oh, sorry, granting special approval for a project, one, exceeding growth density of one dwelling unit per acre in the UF3 future land use category, two, adjacent to a perennial stream, three, partially in the CHA overlay district, four, project partially in the 25-year floodplain as recommended by staff.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rhodes, second. Any additional deliberation?
I'd like to amend it to address the construction not to use Williams Road as its access point.
That was part of my motion.
Was it?
Yeah, I said it at the beginning.
So for clarification, the motion included limiting access, restricting-
Restricting access on Williams Road for construction.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ask a clarification to understand this.
Yes, sir.
Because of the discussion we had, and I appreciate the motion, and everything is fine. Are we talking about Williams Road north of our 150-foot entrance restricted, or-
I thought all of it.
The entirety?
We would have to get the intent of the motion. Mr. Ron, if you could please explain the intent of the motion.
It would be the proportion of Williams Road and the extent of their plans to that where Williams Road stops.
So the paved-
Yes.
For clarification, the paved section of Williams Road could be used for access.
The 150 feet?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rutledge?
I'd like to amend that and say that they can use that 150 feet to do the construction of the road, but not for general access for the site. I'd rather you guys go through your own site for the rest of that stuff.
Well, we're, I guess we're okay to deliberate. Mr. Rutledge, one of the concerns that I would have is, there may be conditions that dictate, for instance, fire access or something like that. So I think maybe if we just ask for additional clarification before this gets before the board, to better stipulate, but we've addressed the concern that the construction, so the comment is noted. I believe there's going to be overriding factors related to that. It may end up being something other than a full functional access, it may end up being something like an emergency access or something to that effect. But we'll ask for clarification as that goes to the board. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have a couple of clarifications. Is there any other deliberation? Okay. The chair's going to call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to item number six, which is a quasi-judicial item, and it is also a presentation upon request. Ms. Knapp, can you read item number six into the record?
Item number six is Z1704. The decas rezoning of two adjacent parcels totaling approximately two and a half acres on the north side of 37th Avenue East, approximately 175 feet east of 9th Street East, Bradenton, from residential, single-family, 4.0- from residential single-family 4.5 to RDD 4.5 zoning district.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board regarding item number six? I have no speaker cards for this item.
No questions?
Any questions? I lost it here. Where are we at? Ms. Boyd, is this your first public hearing for, sorry, you're not gonna get to say very much. So, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay. We're gonna open this up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on item number six? Item number six, that's the dacus rezone?
Dacus.
Dacus, yes ma'am. If you would, if you would come forward, state your name and that you have been sworn. Thank you.
Well, thanks.
My name is April Dacus and I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you.
So, what am I supposed to say?
If you're in favor of this, I wouldn't say anything.
She's the owner.
So, you're good to go.
I'm not gonna be on TV like this, am I?
Yes.
So, make sure you have some glossy eight-by-tens for signing it.
But they won't be able to identify you.
Ms. Dacus, you're the owner of the property and you're in favor of this, or you're against it?
I am in favor of it.
Okay, that's.
I just don't want nobody to get sick.
That's good. All right. Really, that's really all we needed unless you have any additional information, so.
I'll talk another time. I don't want to talk right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there any questions, clarifications, concerns from the commission? All right, we're gonna close the public comment, close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dele.
Based upon staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and Manatee County Land Development Code, I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County Zoning Ordinance Number Z-1704 as recommended by staff.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ron, second. Is there any discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, the chair's gonna call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
You will.
All right. We're gonna move on to the scheduled presentations. That's item number seven. Ms. Knapp, can you please read item number seven into the record?
Item number seven is Plan Amendment 1706, Ordinance 1733, City of Bradenton, Evers Reservoir. This is a transmittal of a plan amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element to designate specific real property from Public/Semi-public 1, future land use classification, to Residential 6, future land use classification, approximately 1,350 feet east of Lockwood Ridge Road, west of the Evers Reservoir, and north of Honoré Avenue, and repeal the declaration of use for an offline water reservoir contemplated under policy 2.14.1.13.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. This item is legislative, so you don't have to be sworn to provide testimony. Have there been any, I guess ex parte doesn't apply to this because it is legislative, so. Introduction by staff.
Good morning. I have to enter into the records a letter that was submitted yesterday afternoon.
Thank you.
Here today representing the applicant is Ms. Dorinda Marvin. She's gonna do a presentation, and after that, I am able to respond questions or to do a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosina. Good morning, Commissioners.
Mornings.
Dorinda Marvin, I'm the senior planner with, and Rachel couldn't get all the names in, so I'll do it for you. Grimes, Goble, Grimes, Hawkins, Gladfelter, and Galvano.
Are you all here today?
We have some here today. I do have with me Mr. Caleb Grimes, attorney of record. I have Mr. Carl Callahan as the representative for the city of Bradenton. We have a group from Taylor Morrison of Florida, they are the contract purchasers. I also have with us people from the disciplines of traffic, environmental, and engineering if we have additional questions for them. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of history on this property. As Ms. Knapp said, this is a map amendment and a text amendment. So, in 2010, the city of Bradenton undertook the process to begin looking at this site. They were going to build an offline reservoir. It's adjacent to their reservoir, as you know. So, in order to do that, this property had a future land use category of RES 6. So, in 2010, they came in, they asked that the property be amended on the future land use map to PSP 1, which is Public/Semi-public 1. When you take a map amendment to one of the Public/Semi-public categories, you're also required to do what they call a declaration of use. So, you can't just come in and say, I want to have a Public/Semi-public use. You have to specifically say what it's for. So, there's a map amendment, and there's also a text amendment. So, there is a portion of our comp plan in the text that says this property can only be used for an offline reservoir. So, moving forward, the city of Bradenton, when they prepared to build that offline reservoir, the cost of that reservoir, the system that they're going to build, had doubled. And so, the city of Bradenton, being good stewards for their taxpayers, looked to alternatives. And they have a system that is called ASR. It's aquifer, storage, and recovery, where they essentially take the water, pump it into the ground, and hold that water. That left this 200 acres as surplus land. And so, the city of Bradenton, again, being good stewards for their taxpayers, thought this is 200 acres of land that is, at least in the future, that they were looking to, not needed for use by the city. They put it out for public bid, and Taylor Morrison of Florida was chosen by the city of Bradenton as a developer to purchase that property. So, what we are here today to do is essentially undo an action from 2010. And this is really that first step. We looked at the property, thought, well, what is the most appropriate category if we're coming in and we want to do residential development? Well, in 2010, and actually, if you go all the way back to the adoption of the comp plan in 1989, it was RES 6. This area is completely surrounded by RES 6. There's actually even some RES 9 in the area. We felt that 6 was an appropriate category because, again, we're sort of undoing that action, taking it back to where it was. So, when the county does their long-term planning, we do very long horizons. We look at 20 years. When we look at capacity of our wastewater and potable water plants, when we look at transportation, at schools, at utilities in the area, our parks, we look at that long horizon. So, this property, since 1989 up to 2010, was RES 6. And it would have been considered in determining what was needed for the county, that this property could be developed at six units to the acre. This infill property has infrastructure surrounding it, has water and sewer lines, has a four-lane thoroughfare adjacent to it, a thoroughfare that even when our potential project is added, is still operating above the allowed capacity, or saying that, it's adopted at a D, it would still be operating at a C. So, it's hard to say above capacity, it makes it sound like you're putting too much on. And so, our schools have capacity in this school service area, and there are some planned improvements in the area that we need to be mindful of, the extension of 44th Avenue East, which will be a new east-west connector going all the way out to Lakewood Ranch, which will provide relief to those other parallel facilities like State Road 70. This property is interesting if you've seen it or know about it. There's an affectionate term for it, it's the property with the mound or the hill. So, when that reservoir was dug, there was essentially overburden that was placed on this property. And for the most part, that hill and even several feet of this property is really, it's a clay material. So, as our engineer explained to me in the present, that property is almost acting like concrete. You know, that clay is not allowing water to drain. And so, in this area currently, there's a lot of runoff coming off of that property into the surrounding area. So, while we're here just to talk about comp plan amendment, I think it's important to kinda look to the future about developing that property. And what this would do, allowing the development of the site, would greatly improve that current situation. We have a portion of the site that drains to the Braden River and a portion that would drain to Rattlesnake Slough. The portion draining to the Braden River would be required to reduce the flow by 25% and the portion to Rattlesnake Slough by 50%. So, you'll see a dramatic reduction in drainage that's coming off of that site. So, there are two important considerations, and I haven't heard public testimony yet, but I did read the letter that was entered into the record, concerns with compatibility because there was a lot of existing residential in the area. But there are really two considerations in this legislative decision for this body, and that is whether the request is compatible with development trends, which, as you said, this area is entirely developed with the exception of the reservoir with residential, and whether it's compatible with surrounding uses and densities and intensities. And again, with the exception of the reservoir, the entire area is designated RES 6 and RES 9. So, as I said, I have folks here, we are beginning that process. I think it was noted in your staff report that we have a rezone and a general development plan that has been applied for. We cannot bring that to you until the board has taken final action on the adoption of this plan amendment. Remember, we do two hearings at the board, transmittal and then adoption, so that we'll come back to where we'll be able to talk in much more detail about the site. But if you have any preliminary questions for them, we're happy to make them available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Any questions for the applicant at this point?
Just one. Yeah, maybe two. So, this ASR, Aqua Storage Recovery, so is this basically to put, I'll say contaminated water into a layer of the aquifer to sit until it percolates and gets clarified?
That's related to the city of Bradenton's operation. I see Mr. Callahan stepping forward.
Yes, I'm gonna let Mr. Callahan answer that question.
He can clarify that.
Carl Callahan, city administrator for the city of Bradenton.
Thank you.
No. It's partially treated water that will go down into the ground and brought back up. It's an operation we currently have going on. Right over at the pump station across the street from the school board is an active ASR well where we take partially treated water, send it down into the aquifer, and then bring it back up. It is not raw water, it hasn't been raw water. That technology is where we hope to go, and we think it's probably almost there, but currently it is not. So, we take the excess water, partially treat it, send it down into the aquifer, and then bring it back for recovery and use it. Matter of fact, we did that this summer, early on before the rainy season started, and it works very well. We've worked very hard on this technology for over 10 or 15 years to perfect it. We are one of the leading entities in the state that have worked toward this along with Swift Mud for years to make sure that the technology works and is safe for the environment.
Mr. Callahan, just for clarification, I understand what an ASR is. Could you explain, you said you put it down and then you bring it up and use it? Can you explain what the use is?
Potable water.
Potable water, drinking water, correct?
Back up, treat it again, and then send it out into our system for drinking.
All right. That's kinda cool, huh?
What it does is, the reason it became a lot better idea, you know, when you picture this property in the past, we talk about an above-ground reservoir. People wanted to think it was just you're digging out the reservoir again and you're doing, it's not that. It was to be what you see in a lot of places. Maybe you even saw it in California, place where you have this very large mound of dirt that looks like a dam. You pump water out of the reservoir up into there to store it, and then release it back into Evers Reservoir when it is necessary. That became a very, very expensive process to look at. What we did in ASR, since we've gotten this technology down, was we already have the two wells in the ground. It is not something we hope to do, it is something we are currently starting to do. We will have similar capacity that exists in the reservoir in the ASR program. So, we look at the future uses of the city of Bradenton, that we're gonna be almost doubling our capacity for water and avoiding surface water issues, which are some, you know, people don't like the taste, you guys have it with Manatee, it becomes a bit of an issue at times. So, this seemed to be a very great alternative, and then ultimately did free up this land.
And again, to clarify, the intent of this land before it was deemed excess property was to create a storage, so you could have potentially had a large volume of water, maybe even stacked up above the grade.
Not maybe.
It would have been.
Would have been way stacked up above the grade.
So, that was the intent, the ASRs allowed the groundwater storage, and now this has become a unnecessary property for the city of Bradenton.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Horgan?
Yeah. I have to say, I don't understand the ASR very well. But if you could bear with me for just one second, we're taking water that is not very good, we're partially treating it. I don't know what the.
We're taking water that is flowing from Lakewood Ranch, which is our primary source of water. It's the watershed, is Lakewood Ranch, flows into the Evers Reservoir, like all the release does. All the water comes into there, we then run that through the water treatment plant in an initial phase that treats it slightly. You can't have any arsenic in it, those are the concerns with ASRs, make sure those things are not in it. Send it down into the ground. I mean, we're taking it right out of the reservoir as it's coming in. Send it down into the ground, partially treated, and then when it's necessary, bringing it back up, running it through the plant again, completely treating it again, and then sending it out for use.
Okay, so we're not putting any sewage down into the aquifer?
No, there are ASR. You hear ASRs, there's two different kinds. One is partially treated water. There are other people who want to take their reuse water, partially treated or treated reuse, and send it down. That is completely different than what we're doing out there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rutledge?
So, what came to my mind when Bradenton was selling off this land and getting the capital and doing something different, we're not gonna have a negative impact to the rest of the Manatee County community because your runoff is running to the river or the lake or any of that, right?
It's your runoff in the county that's coming to us. The primary source of the drinking water in the city of Bradenton is the Evers and the watershed, the Braden River watershed, which is primarily Lakewood Ranch.
The county, okay. And one other question?
It's entirely within the county, so.
Right. Well, thanks. So, then the other question I had is the runoff that is gonna be left from this new development, you said you're gonna treat up to 25%.
Well, that's not Mr. Callahan, that would be the applicant.
Okay, so you're not gonna be responsible. Sorry, my bad.
Again, the ASR is on the property that the city is not selling. The land, excess land is being presented to us today. That's separate and apart from this.
We're retaining probably 80 acres around the reservoir, which is where the plant is.
Gotcha.
Additional potential expansion and where these ASR will.
If it's all coming from the reservoir going in there, this is a kind of a homogeneous system, right?
It's happening already. The fact that this land is being sold doesn't affect their operation, as far as I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Callahan? It's just excess property. In the future, this would have possibly been, or as Mr. Callahan stated, would have been above-ground storage. Yeah. All right. Any additional questions for Mr. Callahan before he steps away? Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Ms. Marvin?
Mr. Connolly, if I could just quickly address, Mr. Rutledge said something about 25% treatment. It's a 25% reduction in the runoff rate.
Right.
For the Braden River and a 50% reduction in the runoff rate for the portion that goes to Rattlesnake Slough. So, not treatment, but holding the water.
Okay, so then that was my kinda next step to the question. So, with that reduction, we also have the standard which I ask often about, it will be a much improved water quality even with that reduction, right? With the new development? Because of the standard?
Let's.
Well, I mean, you had to study that too. I mean, that's my question.
I didn't personally study that, Mr. Rutledge. I'm the planner for the project.
Right. Let's get the applicant's engineer to make a comment regarding the quality of the water and the quantity of the water.
I'll have Mr. Schwein.
My bad. I thought you knew everything. Yes, sir.
Just as a point of clarification prior to that, you also realize when you sit with this portion, this is not the entire parcel that we acquired years ago. Part of that has remained to the south, which is environmental. And the other piece is a previous developer, the reason we have on. And the other piece is a previous developer, the reason we have Honore extension in there is we sold this part of this property to allow the Honore extension to happen.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for the manager.
All right, let's get Mr. Schwade's testimony and then we'll.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ronald Schwade. I've worked with Waldrop Engineering. Yes, the, during this correctly indicated, we've got a runoff rate reduction as required by current county code. But we also have, because we fall within the Braden River watershed, we also have a requirement to add an additional 50% of the treatment volume that would normally be required. So treatment volume, we will be treating an additional 50% because we are going into the reservoir as well as reducing the rate that is currently coming from the site. So it will be an improvement in both treatment and in the rate.
And as I like to say, that'll be better, right?
That'll be better.
Okay, got it. All right, thanks.
All right, for Mr. Schwade.
For the city manager.
Before Mr. Schwade steps away. So could you please explain how you reduce the rate and where that reduction is kept?
Yes. So the stormwater system will, in this case, will consist of lakes. And there are a number of lakes in the current GDP as it's shown in the rezon application. There are no lakes, there's no storage on the site as it currently sits, is relatively flat with a 40-foot mound in the middle of it. The runoff from the additional infrastructure that would be built on this will be captured within those lakes. There will be concrete control structures that'll be installed at the edge of those lakes where that then outfalls into the current runoff infrastructure that's part of the county system. Part of that goes to the south in the Rattlesnake Slough. The other part will go potentially to the north into the current Braden River system. All of that ultimately ends up in the Evers Reservoir. We will calculate through the county modeling that we're using those rate reductions through programming that we use. So we actually control the rate behind the control structures that are built within the lakes, within the surface water lakes.
So if in a pre-construction condition, there's 100 cubic feet per second that goes off the site, the 50% reduction for that basin would be 50 CFS going off so that the difference is held on the site for a longer period of time?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, thank you. For Mr. Schwade, Mr. Callahan.
Mr. Callahan again?
Mr. Callahan, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Callahan, the City of Bradenton now owns this, does it not?
Correct, yes it does.
Has the city considered dedicating land for a north-south connector road between State Road 70 and Honore?
There was a right-of-way through there at one point in time. For the most part, that was, we've been working to get that away. Honore goes down to the plant. So it would be between Honore, where Natalie Way runs down, but no, not all the way through. We weren't wanting that kind of traffic going back and forth.
But we have a problem with north-south connectors in this county. And I would think that I've been very interested in north-south connectors, as most people in the county know. And if we can't get a bridge built over, tear a boulevard, we need to get more traffic off of these two roads. There's only one north-south connector between Lockwood Ridge and Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, and that's I-75, and people die out there on that road. So I'm trying to figure out how we're going to get some north-south transportation.
Well, just from that perspective, I think this, I mean, Natalie Way connector at best would only be probably a couple thousand yards to the east of Lockwood Ridge as it is.
Can we use the document camera?
So no, from that perspective, I mean, this is, that's one of the reasons we look at this. This is City of Bradenton property that is six miles from the City of Bradenton. And what is, you know, how do we use that? We don't have an effective use of that. We're not going to invest significant infrastructure in a property that is six miles from the City of Bradenton. What we look at is a way to take this property, take the money that we'll receive, and invest in the infrastructure in the City of Bradenton. That's the intent for using this money, is to say, how do we better utilize those resources on a piece that is actually way out in the county to be able to further and benefit the citizens of the City of Bradenton?
To that point, Mr. Callahan, did the county have the opportunity to purchase the property?
It was out for bid.
They chose not to.
Actually, we did a whole pre-application process. They were very familiar with this property probably a year ago as to what was looking to be done with this.
And the City of Bradenton doesn't want to build a road from Manatee County?
Well, you know, we kind of helped with that process when we sold this to Pat Neal to build Honore. That's what happened. When Pat Neal wanted to build Honore, when he was forced to for his various projects around there, we did sell the property to Pat Neal, who then built the Honore extension and the associated retention associated with that.
Okay. Additional questions for the applicant?
This then goes into the Manatee County tax base, right? Because they've become a.
It's, I think.
Wish it didn't, but yes, it does.
Thanks again.
All right. So I think we've only heard the applicant's presentation. I think it's time now for staff, and then we'll go to public comments.
Listen, I'd like to ask the staff, the applicant covered the majority of the aspect of the application. It's important to take in consideration what the applicant quote about, that the comprehensive plan designated the majority of this site as Res 6 at the moment that was approved. And the proposal complied with all the provision of the comprehensive plan related to change of circumstances to approve a change of, and the use, and is comparable with the development trends and the uses and densities that are in the area. If you have any particular questions, I am able to answer or transfer the questions to the other part of the team.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, all right. All right, seeing no questions for staff, we're going to move to the public comment portion of this hearing. I've got several speaker cards for this particular item. Again, this is a legislative matter, so you don't have to be sworn in. So you can, Mr. Lou Quinn, if you could, please come forward and state your name, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lou Quinn. I live on 47th Street East. The back of my house backs up onto this property, and I have enjoyed the bullfrogs and the owls and the occasional cows that come along. And I appreciate the earlier comments from Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Horgan about overbuilding. And maybe some of you saw this cartoon in this morning's Herald Tribune, Tribune about overbuilding. I did receive the notice from Katie Labarre in 2010 when they wanted to make, change this from residential 6 to a watershed. And I spoke to her at that time, and she said, you should be very pleased that that development is not going to take place behind your house. The population of Bradenton, according to the Census Bureau that I've looked up, is 55,000 with growth at about a 6% rate. I don't know those to be facts, that's just what I found online. Public Works and Utilities Director Claude Tankersley, at a meeting, City of Bradenton, City Council Special Meeting that took place on November 4, 2015, said, ASRs, which we've all had a little education on ASRs here this morning, will support a city of approximately 75,000 residents. So if we're at 55,000 now, won't be too long before we're at that 75,000 mark. Councilman Bemis Smith said at that same meeting, we're looking for a variety of ways to use the money that might be generated from the sale of that property. He thanked at that meeting, he thanked Bill Evers, who was in attendance at that meeting, for having the foresight to build the city reservoir, the Evers Reservoir, which we're talking about. Mr. Smith went on to say that the city was studying ways to expand it for the future, and the best and most cost-effective method was building an underground aquifer storage reserves. Mr. Evers agreed with that use. I don't know if the Planning Commission is aware, there are four other developments within a mile currently under construction of this site.
Please finish your thought, but again, don't filibuster.
There's four, I didn't see any time limits for anybody else, but.
We've got a clock running. Again, please finish your thought, but.
There are four other developments currently under construction within a mile of that site. There is another land just up the street on Lockwood Road, which has received some negative publicity lately because the trees have all been cut down. I believe that's a development by Mr. Baruff. So there is a lot of other housing going on in that area at this time. And the comment was made that the schools can support it, the traffic can support it, safety issues, police issues, and I don't know if all those impact studies have been done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have is Bob Bolus. And just for clarification, we do have timers that kind of give you a forewarning of the approach. And again, I don't want to cut you off. We do want to hear complete thoughts, so.
Hi, Bob Bolus, 490660, address these. This property abuts the rear of my property. Originally, I purchased my home from Morrison Development, which is part of Taylor Morrison. We wound up in litigation with them because they didn't comply with certain issues we had. And now you're taking the same developer, who's a bait-and-switch individual, and changing the reservoir. When you pump water underground, keep in mind, you're creating a void underground when you're putting pressure underground. We're in an area of sinkholes. As you put more water underground, you're looking for a future disaster. You're going to undermine the infrastructure if you know anything about mining or anything of that nature. So we're opposed to any development back there. When we bought this property from Morrison, it was to be left as a preserve and a preserve only in the full intent, and it should not be changed, no matter who buys it, especially Taylor Morrison, who are changing what we pay taxes for over the last 10, 12 years that we're in that development. We need the consideration more than some of these developers. They come in, and as you heard them just mention, Carlos, I bought a home from Carlos in Riva Trace, which we've had an issue over, the gate that was put in, emergency gate, he bait-and-switched everybody, and the gate was removed, creating a potential disaster for somebody there. That gate is malfunction before an emergency gate is gone. You are bowing down to developers who are looking into a crystal ball and telling you, our engineer said this, tell Irma about how much water she could put into the ground or the floodplains that came in. You cannot predict the future. Nobody in this room and no engineer could do that. What you're trying to do is change what's going on. You're going to dump more traffic on Honore. You're going to dump more traffic over on Lockwood Ridge. They're already congested. Try and get off Lockwood Ridge and get on 70. You stand in line hours, basically, to get out of the traffic. So what you're doing here is allowing a developer to turn around and take from us what was promised us from day one, that that would remain the preserve. Water is the most critical thing we have here, and it's not something we should be screwing around with, is our preserve, our reservoirs. No matter what they're doing, and to say they're going to pump water underground, you're creating a nightmare of the future. You have to tread cautiously on this. Aquifers, underground wells, you're pumping in issues, you're pumping in a potential disaster. You get a flood like we just had from Irma. Right behind my home, there's a ditch. This developer didn't bother to do anything until last week after my house was flooded and other homes along that ditch was supposed to have been repaired and put in a proper way from day one. This is the developer you're dealing with. And if you go back behind my home, you'll see that they just cleaned the ditch, broke numerous trees down with the excavator going through the area. This is something that should have been done over the last 10 years, and it was not done. Mandalay has a problem with it, we have a major problem with it, and now you're taking this developer, who's going to promise you the world and keep changing, 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 and what you're doing, you're putting all of us in jeopardy. He couldn't correct his first problem, let's not be part of his next problem. They have no credibility, and they bait-and-switch everybody, including the commissioners and everybody in this community. We're taxpayers, and we deserve that right, more so than they do. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just for clarification, again, the ASR is in place today. Regardless of what happens here today, it will be in place tomorrow. It already exists. This has nothing to do with the ASR. That's already in place and in operation. Thank you.
I understand. I just hope there's not a disaster from it, but further development of that land and moving water around is going to create a major problem.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have is Deborah Quinn. If you could, come forward and state your name.
Hi, good morning. My name is Deborah Quinn, and I agree with what has been said by my husband and obviously one of our neighbors. The only thing I absolutely, I know we're not going to stand in the way of progress, and where we are is a highly sought-after location. I mean, we are east of, and we are east of Bradenton, and we have access to 75, we have access to Sarasota. We're right smack in the middle of Sarasota and Bradenton, very desirable area. So we do understand the desire for people to move to that location. What I have concerns about really has to do with a lot of the logistics. Honore, for example, is in a two-lane in both directions for its duration. It goes in the single lane. So I really worry about the traffic of Honore specifically. Lockwood Ridge, now that we have Amalfi and some of the other developments that have been added in that location, is, it's a tragedy waiting to happen. I mean, we're now starting to see Sheriff's Park because of the speeding issues we have along that road, as well as just the congestion. The strip mall end, Walwalk was put in, Publix is there. That area is just, from an engineering perspective, is not managed very well in terms of flow of traffic. So those are the things I worry about, not standing in the way of the development, but I'm just not sure from a development and planning perspective that we're going to be able to handle or that I would encourage better management of that thoroughfare areas. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have is George Woolcott. If you could, please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. I'm George Woolcott. I also live in Mandalay. I think after talking with a lot of my neighbors, there's many concerns with this new development. The main reason is nobody has any information. I think that Taylor Morrison needs to be more interactive with the people around us so they can answer these questions. What are you going to do with the dirt? Where's the entrances and exits to the community? And a lot of other questions. And I think that would relieve a lot of this.
Mr. Woolcott, could you please direct the question here? That way you get picked up on the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. I think that we should all be working together to resolve these issues and get some answers.
Okay. For clarification, the process requires that it go through a comprehensive plan amendment, which is the broadest entitlement. After that, there's going to be a rezon that has a site-specific plan. So this is the first step in the process. The detail you're looking for will come at a later date.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker card I have is William Moore. Mr. Moore, if you could, come forward and state your name.
William Moore.
William Moore. I live in Mandalay also. My concerns is, they say that it's a two-lane highway in both directions. It is not. Once you get out on Honoree, if you head west, east on Honoree, it goes right down to a two-lane development and all. And before the county would allow any type of home building on this, because if it's two-hundred acres we're talking about, we're probably talking about maybe eight-hundred homes, which is another sixteen-hundred cars that will be dumping out onto Honoree. It's fine if you're going to be heading west on Honoree, but if you're heading east on Honoree, they can't handle it. I think before they allow any development on Honoree, they should widen it to two lanes to at least University Boulevard.
Thank you. Thank you. The last speaker card I have is Ken Miller. If you could, come forward and state your name, please.
Thank you. Again, my name is Ken Miller, and I too live in Mandalay, one of the housing developments in that area. I don't want to belabor the subject, but my concern is the drainage. Wife and I have lived in Mandalay for several years now, and in coordination with our housing authority and others, drainage has been an issue, continues to be an issue, and I was somewhat pleased to hear the brief discussions and generalities on drainage. But one thing, it needs to be seriously considered. Mandalay is part of the water conservation and drainage area. While Irma was not the threat to the community that we thought it was going to be, rain, heavy rain in prior days, weeks, did emphasize the fact that the way the lakes are connected and how the water drains from Mandalay down to the adjacent community, Silver Lake, et cetera, is completely unsatisfactory, and my concern is to focus on this project as it moves forward and see what the concerns are for drainage. It's critical for that whole area, so let's keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Those were all the speaker cards I had. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of that, of the hearing, and is there any additional discussions, anything that's come up during the public testimony that we need clarification on before we go to rebuttal? Mr. Rhodes?
Just an overall statement. I'm in that same area, basically, where I reside, where you are, and where this is going to be. And like Mr. Horgan said, I'm totally aware, because you get involved in it daily, of the traffic issues there. But the way I understand this, like our chairman said, this isn't an application to the development, and I think a developer was named, but this is just looking at a land use change. And the way I understand it is, the city of Bradenton has already determined this property is up for sale or to be sold. And then if we look, if that decision's already made, then if we look at what alternatives we have in that area, we have residential, we have mixed-use, or we have commercial. Those are the three things, are remaining as it is. I think Mr. Callahan said, "It's not going to remain as it is. They want to sell it, take the profit, and improve something in the city." So in my mind, being a resident of that area, when I look at those alternatives, to me, the better of the three, personal opinion, is residential is better than mixed-use or commercial. So I don't know if we really have a way out of this. And once again, going back, this is just the first step. The next step is, if it's sold and a developer comes in for us, we see who, what, and where he plans to do something. So we're caught between, you know, a good and a bad here, but I think of the scenarios we have, residential is good of the alternatives, and I'm at this point for the project.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brown.
I would like to echo some of Commissioner Rose's comments. I've lived in this area for twelve years. I live in Moat Ranch. I travel Lockwood Ridge, Honoree every single day. So I understand your concerns with traffic and things like that. I travel Honoree all the time. The stop sign at Old Farm and Honoree, you wait in line to get to turn on that. But like Commissioner Rose has said, this property's going to be sold, and I'd much rather see a well-designed community put in that area than a mixed-use, commercial, town home-type product, have a nice residential project. And again, this is the first step in this process. City of Bradenton's selling this property. It's going to be sold no matter what, and I would support the motion for the plan amendment.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Are there any questions for the applicant? I do have some questions for the applicant, so, again, additional comments, our comments were brought up during the public testimony, and I'm going to allow you to address those in rebuttal, but some of the things did raise questions in my mind. Currently, the site is at a very high elevation. What is the current elevation of the site?
I'll have Mr. Schwade address that for us.
I'm not sure, but I think it may be the highest elevation in the county, other than the landfill.
The cow.
Maybe while we're waiting for that, can I address a couple of the things to the public?
Just wait till...
Want to wait? Okay.
Let's wait till rebuttal. Try to have some form to the process. While we're waiting, Mr. Schwade, a question for staff. Mr. Gersonberger, there was discussion regarding reductions and runoff, and also, I believe this is in the Evers, I'm sorry, the reservoir, is it Evers reservoir?
Yeah.
The, those elements are consistent with any project that would be developed in the area.
For the record, Thomas Gersonberger, I don't need to be sworn for this particular project because of being legislated, but with respect to your question, Mr. Chair, yes, any particular projects that are located in the Braden River-Evers reservoir watershed, which is the, basically the watershed upstream of the Evers reservoir, is required to provide one-hundred-and-fifty percent water quality treatment, and is required to provide a twenty-five percent reduction in the allowable discharge rate in post-development condition. As was previously noted, a portion of this project also drains into Rattlesnake Slough, which is a drainage system that's located just to the south of this project and south of Monterey Avenue, which does also drain into the Evers reservoir, which also, in addition to the one-hundred-and-fifty percent water quality treatment requirement, does require a fifty percent flow reduction.
And with regard to those particular items, the increase in water quality treatment, the reduction in runoff, those two elements should provide a better, currently, there's no treatment for the water running off here, the stormwater running off, so we're adding something that does not exist, and then we're reducing the flow, which would have a benefit to any potential property that is adjacent to Rattlesnake Slough or the other basin.
Mr. Chair, that is correct. I believe, I'm not sure if it's presently, but I do know in the past that this particular property had been used as pasture land. So obviously, there will be a big differential in pre-development environmental water quality aspect as compared to post-development condition with utilization of stormwater management facility. With respect to, and it was brought up during citizen comment, this particular project, once this project moves forward to a general development and final site plan stage, we'll also have to account for any existing conveyance systems which run through this particular property as well.
Okay. Thank you. Question for Mr. Gersonberger.
Yeah, as a scientific term, you say then it gets better, right?
Commissioner Rutledge, you would be correct.
I did have a question, because it said it had some cattle-watering ponds and some marshes. Was there any, like dipping ponds there that were determined, or could you determine that from what you saw?
My past experience with this particular property, I've actually been on this property in past years. It's been used predominantly as pasture land. It wasn't particularly used as a, like a dairy operation or any other form of operation greater than pasture land, just for the, basically for the cattle to graze, but it was not used specifically for any type of dairy or any operation beyond that point, to my knowledge. The applicant could go into further detail if there's anything above my knowledge.
Mr. Schwade. Oh, Mr. Horgan, did you have a follow-up for Mr. Gersonberger?
No, for Mr. Davis.
Okay, let's continue on the stormwater. Mr. Schwade, what is the elevation of this property?
So on the western end of the property, it's in the low twenties, twenty-two, twenty-three, maybe up to twenty-five. On the east side of the mound, it's sixteen to eighteen, and the mound itself goes almost up to fifty.
Fifty. What is the elevation of Honoree, generally speaking?
Lower.
Lower? So it's probably around the lower end, the twenty?
Yes.
So, there was a discussion regarding what is going to be done with the fill material. Has there been a determination with regard to this property? Again, I know this is a comprehensive plan, but it's been represented in the public hearing that there's a plan for this. I was wondering, has there been any discussion as to what's going to be done with the material?
Mr. Conley, we've looked at several opportunities. I spoke some time ago to Mr. Gore, the utility operations director, about whether this could perhaps be some material used at the landfill. From time to time, they do need it. You know, it's not your typical fill dirt that someone could utilize, and so at this time, we don't have a firm plan where that material will be going, but we're continuing those discussions with the county.
I guess part of my question should have been, is the intent to leave it elevated, and are you going to put houses at an elevation fifty?
Well, so, Mr. Conley, and we're getting into sort of the details of the general development plan. What we've shown in that particular area is a recreation area, if you will, because it's uncertain as to what will happen in that particular area.
All right. So certainty will come at a later date with that. Mr. Horgan.
Is that a ski resort?
I suggested a BMX track, but I don't know, that didn't really go over.
Well, the neighbors like that.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for the applicant before they step away?
I had one.
Mr. Rutledge.
Why is it not adequate for fill? Is it too much vegetation in it, or is...
It's the type of material. It's very clay-heavy.
Question? Mr. Gersonberger, you have a...
Actually, supplemental response. The material, as Ms. Martin brought up, the material itself is heavily consistent of clay, which is not very suitable for any type of structural material for building, for any type of building, or for utilization even as a base material or sub-base material for roadways.
And to Mr. Gersonberger's point, that's one of the things that I think is beneficial with getting the dirt off the site. Not only is it elevated, that means a lot of runoff, and it's clay material, that runoff goes into Rattlesnake and Evers reservoir, and it has a negative effect on the basins. It skews it in the opposite direction that we want to see these trends to be, so. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Horgan, you had a question for Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis? This is a comprehensive plan amendment that we're dealing with today. So this would be the appropriate time to deal with rights-of-way, is my opinion. And it is my opinion, we're not, we would not ask the city of Bradenton to build us a road, but we should be looking at getting additional rights-of-way as a part of a comprehensive plan amendment, because that's where you get the roads, for a north-south road along that eastern boundary of that property. And I feel very strongly about that. So, do you have any comments, Mr. Davis?
For the record, Clark Davis, Transportation Planning Division Manager. To set the table, your comprehensive plan is, among other things, a growth template for your county, so it looks at the future land uses, where the population and employment can occur in the future, and what the infrastructure is that's needed to serve it. Among those things are roads. We have a designated collection of roads we call thoroughfares. It shows the interstates and the arterial and collector roadways. The portion of road that you're, I think, talking about would be an extension of Natalie Way, as it is, as a local road up near State Road Seventy all the way down to Honoree Avenue. While we believe, as transportation planners, that that would have some value for some of the reasons that you stated earlier in relieving some pressure, for example, at Lockwood Ridge Road and State Road Seventy, to have an additional connection in the area, the analysis that they undertook, looking at short-range conditions and long-range conditions to see whether we needed additions to that thoroughfare network, didn't suggest any reason for us to compel the applicant to designate a new collector roadway in the area, which is basically what it would take. And so while we wouldn't necessarily require dedication of that right-of-way at this point, because it's just a comp plan amendment, we wouldn't be acquiring it at this point, and we wouldn't necessarily expect anybody that developed it to build it unless they needed to mitigate their impacts, it would be a time to consider whether or not a collector should be added, but for the reasons I've stated, we did not see a reason to compel the applicant to do it, so it would have to be voluntary on their part to show that as a collector roadway through the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, Mr. Davis. Sorry. Some citizens have brought up the course of traffic through there. Is there anything in the county plan, because there is some right-of-way there, to widen Honoree from Cooper Creek Boulevard to Old Farm?
It is just that. It's planned. So today, the Honoree Avenue is four lanes from Lockwood Ridge Road, and it narrows to two lanes along the frontage of this site. It's two lanes from there down to south of Cooper Creek Boulevard, and it's four lanes as you get closer to University Parkway. All along there, it is either built as the future southbound pair of lanes with room to build the northbound lanes in the future, or as the outside two lanes of a future four-lane road. So the groundwork has been laid to ultimately widen that to a four-lane road. It is not currently funded in our five-year schedule of capital improvement, so it's one of those things that would occur over time as more development occurs in the area and the impact fees are accrued, and to be able to allocate to that type of capacity improvement.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions for staff? Okay. All right, we're going to go to the applicants. I'm sorry, any closing comments from staff?
No, at this time.
All right, we're going to go to the applicant's rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Just very briefly.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a question about whether actual studies were undertaken. In a comprehensive plan, even though we don't know exactly what will come to fruition on the site, we are required to perform those studies. We did have to provide a traffic impact study, and the comment that I presented about the schools having capacity was based on a report that is in your package from the school board, that there is capacity in the school service area, considering the projected population of this land. And what they do is look at, based on that density in the Res Six, how many students would be created from there. There was a comment that this property was considered a preserve when certain people bought their homes, and I just want to be clear that this property was never in any sort of status or considered a preserve. Prior to two thousand and ten, it was designated Res Six. After two thousand and ten, it was for, you know, an offline reservoir facility, which we have heard Mr. Callahan describe as something that could possibly have a visual impact to those residents. And the congestion in the area with traffic, you know, one of the things, very early on in my career, I heard someone say that, has always stuck with me, and I think about it and repeat it to myself all the time, is that the worst way we can spend our tax dollars is to build roads that we don't need yet. And one of the things we have to do, and you see the county doing it now, is that as State Road Seventy has... as State Road 70 has become congested, they have now taken those dollars and they're building 44th Avenue to relieve it. So, you know, those things kind of come in waves. We have to experience a little congestion before we decide where we need those roadways. That's the way that we are, again, good stewards of our county taxpayer dollars. And wanted to let the neighborhood know, the reason we didn't have a neighborhood meeting at this early stage, as you said, it's comp plan amendment. There's very little detail that we can provide at this stage. We want the property to be, instead of this public facility, we want it to be residential. We do intend to hold a neighborhood meeting for the rezone and the general development plan where we can then provide a site plan that they can look at, you know, the layout of the site and get those detailed questions answered. So, I just wanted to make that commitment to the neighbors, that that was our plan, and we'll continue with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've heard the applicant's closing comments. Just one point of clarification, Mr. Davis. You indicated that the county did not feel compelled to require that the applicant provide right-of-way, future right-of-way. Because there was a finding that it wasn't necessary, if the applicant, even if they volunteered to provide right-of-way, would the county have to pay for that?
When there's an amendment to the comprehensive plan, to something that could increase the density or intensity of the uses, what we look at is whether or not we need additional infrastructure to support it. In my case, I'm looking at the capacity of the roads. Based on the analysis they provided, whether or not we can achieve and maintain adopted levels of service through the short range, and sort of the integrity of the overall thoroughfare plan in the future, did not suggest the need for an additional thoroughfare in the form of Natalie Way extending between Honoree and State Road 70. However, transportation planning experience tells me that it would provide some value in the area just because of the limited number of north-south connections, as Mr. Horgan was discussing earlier. So, based on the analysis, we didn't have a basis for saying, as part of this comp plan amendment, you must also designate this collector roadway. If the applicant came forward and suggested that they add it, we would not object to it. And then, as development went forward, it would unfold naturally, you know? So, as development occurs, you know, they go forward with a general development plan. We would ask that the right-of-way and roadway, to the extent that it made sense, be incorporated into the development of the site. They might have to dedicate abortion for access, or it might just simply be reserved or set aside for the county to acquire in the future. So, coming around to your point of your question, it could be a combination of things, some of it dedication outright to serve the site-related needs of the project, but otherwise be something that the county would acquire through purchase.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a clarification of that, realizing this point, this property does not attach to Natalie Way.
Right.
There is still an entire city of Bradenton parcel in between there.
No, understood.
That is, the wastewater, is the water treatment plant. There are homeland security concerns around water treatment plants, and there's a lot of issues associated with that. You see why there's a really big fence around this property now.
Right. Understood. Thank you.
And the other thing is, like the cattle question, it's been a handshake agreement with a local cattle guy for periods of years. Handshake agreement, city of Bradenton, put your cattle on the site, maintain the fence lines, we're good with that. No money for it, no nothing else, just it helps to maintain the property.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll go to discussions, deliberations. Any additional discussions regarding this application? So, we're clear, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. It doesn't rely on any specific plan, it's just the merits of the application. If there's no discussion or deliberation, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Delezline.
Based upon evidence presented, comments made in the public hearing, technical support documents, and finding the request to be consistent with the Community Planning Act as codified in applicable portions of Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes of Mardi County Comprehensive Plan, I move to recommend transmittal of the plan amendment PA-17-06 as recommended by staff.
We have a motion by Mr. Delezline. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rhodes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the chair's going to call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Chair votes aye. Also, motion passes five to one. Mr. Horgan, I think we know your objection. Do you wish to state anything further?
I just think that if you're going to do something, even if there isn't a further connection all the way through, you start with a dedication of something. You can't come back and get it later.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Are there any other matters to be heard? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing.